Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, October 24th at 7:00 PM. Adam Cook, if you'll call it all.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover. Ben Sossetta.
Here.
Charles Swankie.
Here.
Tom Jones. George Capps. Randy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Sosseto will do our invocation and Councilman Charlie Davidson will do our plug.
Bless me, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening that you've given us to come here. And we'd ask you, Lord, for wisdom and direction tonight as we assemble to take up matters of our city. That you give guidance and direction here and to do what's best uh for the citizens and for our community. We ask you, Lord, though, that you'd be with those of our first responders that are out tonight, uh protecting us, keep your hand upon them, protect them, or be with their families as well. We'd also ask you, Lord, to be with those uh serving right now in harm's way in Israel. And all that's going on there, we'd ask for your protection uh over those that are are fighting. Or that you'd bring a peaceable uh into this conflict here soon. Blessed tonight, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, first we have approval of the agenda. Jim.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Charlie?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next is awards and presentations. Chief? Will you take a minute?
We are very proud and very happy to do a promotion this evening. Luke Tibbetts is being promoted to the rank of detective. A little bit about him. Corporal Tibbetts received an associate's degree from Trinidad State Junior College, excuse me, in Colorado. He has been employed with the Park City Police Department since April of 2017. He was promoted to corporal in October of 2020. As a corporal, Luke served a temporary assignment in investigations for a period of a year. He also currently serves as the department's range master organizing the firearms, excuse me, training program for the whole department. He also is a certified instructor for active shooter medication training and has provided training for the city.
Chief? Chief? Can you guys come up? If you're a little better back there.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Get to watch the show.
Thank you, Chief. So, nobody signed up for a public forum? Uh, staff reports? Dee?
Sean. Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Quite a few things to pass tonight. Uh, first, I have several project updates around the city. APAC's uh APAC finished with West Park View paving as of yesterday. My own personal opinion, it looks very nice. Staff will do a walkthrough later on in the week, a final inspection within the next couple of days, but it is already opened up to the public. Another road project complete is Air Cap Drive. Andale finished it and then staff inspected it last week, so it was open to the public as of Friday afternoon. And then finally, the Nova Chip Seal that was being done at 85th between Broadway and Interstate 135, uh that was completed yesterday. So that's quite a bit of work here in the last couple of weeks. Uh, as many people are probably aware, the end cap of the median that is just to the uh east, it's on the east side of Interstate 135 at 61st Street. That recently was cut back 21 feet this past week to better accommodate traffic that is turning westbound off the northbound exit. Uh, they had to reestablish the base, and so now that that's had some time to cure, uh later on in the week, they will be completing their two-inch melon overlay uh towards the end of the week, which will finish out that project. That is going all the way from the Jacksonville intersection over to the bridge uh on 61st Street. In addition to these projects, Public Works has been also shaving down the shoulders along Broadway that had built up with just regular dirt, debris, and and silt over the years. Uh, this will definitely help out with the problems, uh drainage problems that council expressed, uh Councilmember Jones expressed at the last meeting, so kudos to them. Uh, and then other things in Public Works, this past week, staff has received the new residential smart technology Neptune water meters. About 2,700 of them in total. They're sitting over there at the shop, and those are in preparation of Schulte Supply. Uh, they still have two other jobs. Their commitment is to start in January time period, but then that'll be a three or four month process to where they will be swapping out every water meter within the community, so. Um, as as council is well aware, as far as staffing, you know, I'm somewhat usually hesitant to mention that because we all know that times are tough and difficult as far as finding, hiring, training, and retaining uh good talent. We do have the best talent here in Park City. But I would like to highlight the efforts of one, all of our department heads, and especially our assistant and city administrator, who is also our finance director, Ms. Dana. All just within the past few weeks or months in the police department. First of all, we have congratulations to Officer Lybarger. She graduated this past Friday from KLET C, so she's now coming home, starting as of today, I believe, uh on shift. Uh, then we have Officer Brashears, who is soon behind her. He is scheduled to graduate in December 8th. Naturally, both of these have to go through field training operations, but nevertheless, any amount of breathing room that we can get is welcomed and sincerely appreciated. Also, within the last couple of weeks to months, we have hired a new police department administrative assistant, a new public works administrative assistant, a new court clerk, a new maintenance technician, a new HR benefits payroll specialist, and a new code enforcement officer. We're not there yet. We're not celebrating too much, but it's it's better than it has been in the past several months. As far as upcoming events, uh Friday, for those looking to have a fun, safe Halloween experience, the Park City Chamber of Commerce is hoping uh hosting their trunk or treat at the Park City Library. That will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. This Saturday is our Fall Fest Celebration in Hat McLean Park. The activities start about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. They include a costume contest, candy prizes, food trucks, pumpkin decorating, bounce houses, pony and hay rack rides, uh smores, and much more. Uh, around 6:30 or when it gets dark, the fun will continue to move over to the community building where there will have movies in the park. And naturally, this uh what we'll be showing will be the movie Hocus Pocus, so. And then finally, let's talk about the election. On November 7th, that's Election Day. It goes from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Leading up to that, early voting is available at the Cedric County Election Office now. It's uh Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, and it goes all the way up until noon on November 6th. Here at Park City, folks can vote early here at the city administration building from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on November 2nd and 3rd, and from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM on November 4th. And the last thing, Mayor, is finally, um, the city offices will be closed on November 10th in observance of Veterans Day on the 11th. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we- Well, I I had a question.
Go ahead.
No, I didn't. If you called me or talking to Ben, okay. Uh, I I'm catching you cold, Sean, and I don't mean to do that tonight. I just didn't have a top opportunity to talk to you before. I've been asked what happened to the meetings online.
The meetings online.
Where do people find them? Because they're not finding them on YouTube, and they're not finding them on the Park City site, and they're asking me where to watch it. And I said, well, there was a 24-hour delay, I thought, on uh on the Park City site, but-
I I can get back to you, sir. I do know that uh three or four months ago, we had some issues and problems, but that had been resolved, so I will I will get back to you on that, though.
Understanding the last thing that was posted was in June, so-
Okay.
We're recording it, and I just don't know where it's going. I've been asked, and I told them I don't know, so.
Okay, I will find out, sir.
I'm catching you cold. I don't mean to do that.
No, that's fine, sir. We'll find out, and we'll make a a posting on the on the website as well.
I know people were used to watching on Facebook or YouTube, too, and that's gone, so.
And I may have misunderstood. You said that's all I have. Was there something from finance?
Well, yes, sir. There's the finance director's report that this is all I have is of, so, sorry. Kind of got those backwards. I-
Should have. I got them all warmed up, Dee.
He looks at me, but he just said Dana's the finance director.
Yeah.
He said Dana's the finance director.
Did I?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Don't confuse me.
You're HR now.
Okay, Marlo's handing out our typical two reports. We'll start with the tax distribution that should be on the top of the two that she's handing out. Okay, this report provides the current year-to-date collections as well as the annual amounts received. Fire four years. Maybe shouldn't have been meant for this tonight. Um, a few rows up from the bottom of the report, the row labeled subtotal property taxes shows you how much we've been increasing in property tax collections each year due to increased valuations while maintaining the same mill levy. Below that is the percentage increase over the prior year's collections, and right below that are the final mill levies for each year. Our 2023 collections are 20.8% higher than last year's full year collections, which in terms of dollars is a little over a million dollars. That's the result of our 28% increase in assessed valuation. However, please remember, when we think of that, um, the increase in revenue also came with large increases in our costs as well. Our street work, our sidewalks, our vehicles, our equipment, our labor, everything is more expensive. And we're trying to do more street work and so forth as well. We annually receive six property tax distributions from the county. The January distribution is the largest, and June is the second largest, due to the first and second half of property taxes being due to the county on December 20th and May 10th respectively. The October and December distributions are the smallest, with December mostly being a cleanup distribution of motor vehicle taxes. And if you would go to the second report I gave you. For each type of revenue, we've provided the amount of the full of each full year's collection, as well as a year-to-date column that shows how much we've collected this year as can as compared to collections through the same timeframe in each of the previous years. Some sections of the report reflect collections through September and others through October because we haven't yet received all of our October payments. In case of the franchise fees, as I've mentioned to you in the past, we receive a lot of those payments throughout each month, so I don't include the currentments to date because it wouldn't really be a full month yet, so. Okay, for the sales tax, our sales tax collections continue to do very well. Each one of the eight payments received through August this year were record highs as compared to the corresponding month in each of the prior years. This year's February payment of $223,151 is the highest payment ever received by the city of Park City. As I mentioned to you in my last report, there continues to be talk of a potential recession, so it's good to have some additional revenue in the bank in case that does happen. Additionally, it's my understanding that beginning this month, 43 million people around the country that have student loans must start paying them back again after a three-year break due to the pandemic. They will therefore have less money to spend on other things, which means there will likely be a drop in sales tax collections. Franchise fees. Collections through the end of September this year are $784,000 as compared to $708,000 for the same time period last year, which is a 10.7% increase or $76,000. However, as I mentioned in the past, presentations, it's difficult to compare apples to apples on this one because payments aren't always made in the same month and sometimes not even in the same year. Local revenue sharing, that's the casino revenue. Under the MOU between the city of Park City and the Yandotte Nation, the city receives quarterly payments of $187,500, which is $750,000 a year. We've received all four of the quarterly payments this year totaling $750,000. Gas tax. We receive these payments quarterly from the state and from the county, but the time period of the states and counties quarters are different. To date, we've received four quarters of the state payments, but only three quarters of the counties. The total of the state's four quarters are higher this year than in any prior year. Given that the gas tax payments, gas tax payments nowhere near cover the cost of our street work, it's nice to see some increases in that revenue. In 2022, less than a third of the cities, uh Park, city of Park City's street-related costs were paid with the gas tax. We received only $321,000 in gas tax revenue, and the city subsidized an additional $720,000 through a transfer from the general fund to the special streets and highways fund. That's the equivalent of 7.19 mils. For the 2023 budget, due to council desiring to see more street and sidewalk improvements, as well as the need for a new backhoe, the city is supplementing the fund with a transfer of $1,576,000 from the general fund. That's the equivalent of 12.25 mils. And it's nearly five times the amount of the gas tax received last year. If you recall, the gas tax is based on gallons, not dollars purchased at the pump. The amount charged on each gallon purchased has been unchanged since 2003. That's 20 years. As I mentioned in my last report, the federal government is encouraging more electric vehicle vehicles on the road, so unless the method of calculating the gas tax changes, we most likely will soon be seeing decreases in collections. I have seen some articles on the topic recently that suggest charging everyone a set amount per mile driven rather than per gallon of gas purchased at the pump. I'm not sure how or when that would be collected without every road becoming some type of toll road. They haven't really given any suggestions on how that would happen, so maybe the county would collect it, you know, when tags and taxes are paid, you have to turn in your mileage or something. I don't know. There has been no indication of how that would work, but but at least they're thinking about it. Transit gas tax. Uh, collections for the full year of 2022 decreased 23% from that of 2021. As we've previously discussed, although there are a couple of reasons collections dropped, the biggest reason is that the Best Western Hotel and Convention Center was sold in December 2021, and the facility is using, being used for a different purpose. In April this year, I reported to you that we had only received one quarterly distribution, and it was the lowest we had ever received for the first quarter payment in the history of our in-code software, which goes back to 2011. The good news now is that the total of the first three quarterly payments of 2023 are $8,700 more than the total of the first three quarterly payments in 2022. So in other words, the last two quarterly payments we received this year not only made up for the really bad first quarter, but they have also surpassed last year's collections for the same time period. The bad news is that we need to collect $115,000 more in the last quarter this year to match the 2021 collections, and that's not going to happen. However, with a considerable amount of activity that has been proposed for Park City, it is anticipated that there will be more hotels constructed in the future, which would increase the future transit guest tax collections once they open and begin remitting tourism tax to the state. Liquor tax. If you recall from my last report, we collected $169,000 in 2022, which was 125% more than the 2021 collections due to liquor tax sales at the casino. We received three of the four distributions to date this year, and given that we've collected $11,000 more at this point than we did for the same time period last year, it appears we'll complete the year with another record high. Interest income. In 2019, which was pre-COVID, the city received interest income totaling $246,000 for the full year. Interest dropped drastically to $35,500 in 2020 and $2,500 in 2021. Interest earnings started to come back in 2022, ending the year at $97,000. For the first nine months of this year, we've earned uh interest totaling $490,000, which can be attributed to the Fed continuously raising rates. From articles I've read, it appears the majority anticipates the Fed will raise rates at least one more time. Lastly, on the expenditure side of things, I've asked a couple of staff members to project their 2023 expenditures through the end of the year to determine if any budgets uh are needed to be amended. If any are needed, my plan is to send the notice of hearing to the Arch Valley News by noon on November 28th for December, or for a November 30th publication. The public hearing and adoption would then be held during the December 12th city council meeting. So that's the extent of my report. I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, um, just also, we talked, you talked to there at the beginning, I had the alarm taxes and and that part. This is also the first full year that Amazon has been on the tax roll as well. Is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that, you know.
Because I was under, my thought was that that was one of the reasons for the such a large increase in the property tax collections from '22 to '23 was that now we're collecting the full completed value of Amazon, which accounts for a pretty hefty amount of money.
I I believe that's correct, sir.
Okay, because, yeah, obviously. It makes, just so that way that it's out there, because a 20% increase is pretty high, but that is also because of the added 100, 100 homes that were built in '21, and then Amazon coming on as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else have any questions for Dee? Thank you, Dee. All right. Move to the consent agenda. Jim.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Charlie?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. All right. Item seven, discuss and consider approval of a bid from Andale Construction LLC for the extension of Hartman Arena Drive at I-135 Arena Edition. Sean.
Yes, sir. A petition was filed and approved by the council back in June to extend and connect Hartman Arena Drive with water and stormwater drainage to be installed where necessary to serve the improvement district in accordance with city standards, plans, specifications, either prepared or approved by the city engineer. A bid opening was conducted on October 11th with one company submitting a bid, Andale Construction. The bid was $830,000, which was below the engineer's estimate of $950,218. Attached is a copy of the bid tabulation and contract. His budgeted and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Charlie?
I move to approve the bid tabulation, authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Andale Construction, an amount not to exceed $830,000 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
Thank you, Charlie. Ben?
Second.
Jim, did you have something?
Nope, I was just gonna second.
Okay, motion by Charlie, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Item eight, discuss and consider approval of construction engineering contracts for paving and water for Hartman Arena Drive extension.
Yes, sir. The petition, again, filed and approved by council in June. The original engineering and design work for this project was previously paid for by the adjacent property owners of the extension. Attached are two contracts from ASM Engineering Consultants LLC, for one, finishing up the bidding, construction, engineering, and inspection for $56,000. And then they're broken down on $35,500 for paving, $20,500 for water. Again, authorized and funded via temporary financing until long-term general obligation bonds. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Charlie?
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute contracts with ASM Engineering Consultants LLC in amount not to exceed $56,000 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
Thank you, Charlie. Jim?
I'd second.
Seeing no further discussion, a motion by Charlie, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Item nine, discuss and consider change in the name of Hartman Arena Drive. Sean?
With the recent purchase of Hartman Arena and the anticipated name change, staff is proposing change in the name of Hartman Arena Drive just simply to Arena Drive. Currently, there are seven businesses. They're all listed below on the staff summary along Hartman Arena Drive. Each of them have personally been talked to, uh notified of the intent to change the street name, uh if council seems to approve tonight. Those uh businesses include Ditchwich, Thermal King, Hartman Arena, United Rentals, Stormmore, and Harper Camperland, which actually probably needs the correction because it's no longer Harper Camperland. They changed their names as well. Uh, it's Blue-
Compass.
Blue Valley Rentals or Campers?
Blue Compass.
Yes, Blue Compass.
Okay.
I talked with them, uh, again, this past week, and all of them were well aware of it. Cedric County Fire Department have contacted both of the chiefs there, uh Cedric County GIS, Post Office, everybody is well aware. And quite honestly, with only seven businesses, they realize that they don't even really need to change their stationery. As soon as it runs out, they'll they'll finally do it, but they're supportive of it as well.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, well, it feels like going from name brand to best value, but um I guess it'd make a motion to approve changing Hartman Arena Drive to just Arena Drive.
Charlie?
Yeah, second, just for some, uh, a question or two questions. Is there signage we're gonna have to change? I can't think of any.
Signage?
Yeah, like street signs.
Uh, we'll change street signs, um, not so much along the highway, but we would change street signs at the north end and the south end, right there at 85th Street and 77th Street.
Okay, any, any chance we we may revisit this if if the arena is renamed something again, or you think we'll just leave it?
I I I would, council can do whatever council wants. I would prefer not, my recommendation wouldn't be not, because the owner of the arena may put out forbid who wants naming rights, and that could go for a contract of three to five years, one year, and then we could be back in the same situation again. We don't know if that's going to change, so that's why we said simply Arena Lane or Arena, I'm sorry. Makes sense. Arena Drive.
Thank you, sir. Tom?
I was uh looking at the alignment, and an arena probably wouldn't work, but Air Cap Drive, I've mentioned once before about renaming that something, and I don't know if that aligns up on a map with Hartman where it would continue on down through. Uh, I'd like to throw that out there for same thing for uh update. Get away from Air Cap Drive to a more of a destination, street name.
So call it Arena Drive? So, call it Arena Drive?
Pardon?
Call it Arena Drive?
Well, I don't care. I mean, I don't know how it lines up. The post office likes things that line up to be called the same thing all the way through town. There's some definite impediments between the two streets, so it could be something else.
Yes, sir, and I, no, I was just gonna say, we can bring that back for, for discussion.
I know nobody's asked for it, but we've renamed some other streets, and while we're doing it, I'd like to see that updated.
I would just balk it, personalize the name towards a business or something located on the street, kind of like we've kind of learned on the last two, up by the fire station, we renamed that one after the name changed, and now this one. Because as it fills up, if we, and I'm not against what Tom's saying, I'm just saying, not something like what it's gonna become, Aquarium Drive or whatever, Champ Town, whatever it is, I would, just in case.
Can I throw something out here real quick?
Sure, Ben.
Thanks. Since, I mean, we've talked about a plan for naming streets after former mayors and such like that. Have we put anything thought along that line, too?
Not for either one of these drives. So far, we have accommodated the first five.
Oh.
So, we're, we're getting there, sir, but.
I just didn't know, because John was mentioning about naming something about, naming a street about something on that drive, because it can change, obviously, now granted, but that was just my thought. I don't, I don't care. Arena's fine. It's Melbatoast, but it's good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, seconded by Charlie. Jim?
I was gonna weigh in, too, here, but it doesn't make sense to me why Air Cap Drive is not the same as Arena Drive. You drive other places and other towns, all these access roads have the same name, so it seems to me it gotta be the same name, too. I'm definitely in favor of changing the name from what it is now, but we ought to have a longer term plan to get some consistency on our names here, so we're not changing them all the time.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Item ten, consider ordinance creating sections four dash one zero zero one through four dash one zero one two of the municipal code adopting the two thousand twenty edition of the National Electrical Code and repealing sections four dash two oh one through four dash two forty-one of the municipal code. Doug?
Mayor and council, as I said in the staff summary, this is probably a long overdue updating of our electrical code. The existing code is based upon the two thousand and eight National Electrical Code. The NEC put out in two thousand twenty a revised addition to the standard electrical code for municipalities, and what ordinance you have in front of you is an adoption of that two thousand twenty code with a minor number of amend, local amendments that our code enforcement staff thought were appropriate for our city. The last sentence in the background explains that, why this is being renumbered instead of an amendment to what we already have is, it would have been really difficult to try to squeeze this into what we had back in two thousand and eight, so the easiest thing was to repeal the entirety of the two thousand and eight code with the local amendments, and then put this in a separate article, Article ten, right now. So, I would recommend that the council adopt the ordinance, which adopts the two thousand twenty code with local amendments suggested by our code enforcement staff, and then repeals the existing two thousand and eight code and the amendments that existed in it.
Thank you, Doug. Charlie?
Appreciate that, Doug. It makes sense to me, so I move to approve ordinance eleven seventy-eight, two thousand twenty-three, and ordinance creating sections four dash one zero zero one through four dash one zero one two of the municipal code of Park City, Kansas, all relating to the electrical code and repealing sections four two oh one through four two four one of the municipal code of Park City, Kansas.
Thank you. Jim?
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call, Blute, Madam Clerk?
Charlie Davidson?
Aye.
Ben Sossetta?
Aye.
Charles Shrinky?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Next to item eleven, receiving update on the city's employee health insurance plan?
Yes, sir. Okay, hopefully, there's a lot of questions on this. Understanding, first of all, I want, I want to be very clear, there's no doubt that our employees are a most valued asset. I think council would echo that. Park City currently provides one of the most competitive employee health insurance plans available throughout municipalities. Currently, right now, and oh, by the way, each council member has a sheet up at your dais that kind of talks about the complexity of our current plan with what we're proposing for the renewal and the differences thereof. Currently, Park City plays, pays for our employees' health insurance premium, as well as contributes to each individual health reimbursement account. Currently, an individual has a deductible right now of five hundred dollars and a maximum yearly out-of-pocket of fifteen hundred dollars, so this is just the individual. The city contributes to an individual's human, excuse me, health reimbursement arrangement a thousand dollars, so realistically, an individual's maximum out-of-pocket, if they really have a bad health year, is five hundred bucks. For the family, their current deductible is fifteen hundred dollars with a yearly maximum out-of-pocket of three thousand. The city's HRA contribution is two thousand, so again, their truly yearly maximum out-of-pocket is a thousand dollars. It's important to note that as a small group, we're not a large organization, but as a small group with our current provider, these plans, both the deductibles and the maximums from what we're being told by our current insurance broker, are no longer available. Regardless of money, we don't, those plans are not available to us anymore, so changes have to be made. Under the renewal plan, the individual now has a thousand dollar deductible and a maximum pocket, out of pocket of five thousand. For family, it gets worse. It's two thousand dollars as a deductible and a maximum out-of-pocket of ten thousand dollars. Although times have changed and sometimes we're forced to make tough financial decisions, it's important to note that Park City made a financial commitment to each one of our current employees when they were hired, and I would like and respectfully ask that the council continue to honor that commitment. Staff is asking for council support in increasing the city's HRA contribution, ensuring that each employee's maximum out-of-pocket remains the same, each current employee. That equates to forty-five hundred dollars for individuals and nine thousand dollars for families. Now, here, again, the staff report was put together last Friday, and some things have changed between now and then with our insurance broker, so I originally wrote that other than two very small minor changes, there's more than just two, so I want to be clear about that. There are some small minor up and down changes in both co-pays as well as percentages. This will virtually have the same coverage in the financial implication for our current employees. Now, unfortunately, due to the rising cost of healthcare, regulatory uncertainty, and the changing needs and demographics of our employees, that current level of city participation, I believe, is unsustainable for future employees and requires some kind of adjustment. I'm not the biggest fan of a two-tiered system, but we can't have a two-tiered system when it comes to our health insurance plan, but we can have a two-tiered system as far as what the city is willing to contribute under their health reimbursement account. My recommendation is for all future employees, staff is, continue the current level of contribution of a thousand dollars for individuals and two thousand dollars for families, and then the employee would therefore be responsible for the remainder, maximum out-of-pocket. So, that means anybody who's not in the pipeline now, if we haven't had an interview, if we, you haven't submitted an application, somewhere around January, February time period, if there's a new employee, they will know going into this, this is what Park City offers. It's still a very, very, very competitive health insurance plan when compared to other municipalities, but what it does do is it protects the existing employees that have been here for, I don't know, six months or six years or longer, but it, it still maintains that commitment to them, that if they have that real bad family out-of-pocket. Now, how do we pay for that? That's the other thing that needs to be clarified under the fiscal impact. Again, this was, the staff summary sheet was written on Friday, and some things have changed. It's not that there's a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar reduction in the premium, but there is nearly a ninety-one thousand dollar premium reduction from what we paid last year to what we would pay this upcoming year. So, the proposal is, not every employee is going to have that worst-case medical year that requires the city to fund their HRA account with nine thousand dollars. The way the HRA account works is it is a city account. That's the reason why we can have two tiers. It's not a health insurance account. It's a city account that we put money into, and when it needs to be replenished, it gets replenished on the city's behalf. If you look at over the last four or five years, our utilization has been about thirty-seven percent of our employees utilize the health insurance more so than the other employees. So, it is a calculated risk. It is a math problem to sit there and look at and say, okay, by saving the ninety-one thousand dollars in premiums, would that more than likely offset any increase to those employees that may have a bad year? And yes, the, the numbers prove out that that's the way it should be, so, again, this, this is not the best situation. We already know that some of our employees are gonna go, wait a minute, this is a little bit different, because in the past, they have always been able to meet their deductible, meet their out-of-cost, and then the rest of it is kind of so long. If the maximum out-of-pocket is increasing, that means that the employees are going to have to pay for it, get reimbursed, pay for it, get reimbursed, pay for it, get reimbursed, whereas they may have done that maybe once or twice in the past year, they more than likely will have to do it throughout the whole entire year if they have that bad medical year. That being said, they are getting reimbursed. Again, problematic for the employees. It is the best-case scenario that we have available to us. The original renewal premium coming in was going to be nearly a nine, ten percent increase, another hundred and thirty to hundred and fifty thousand dollars more to the city. In this particular case, there are savings, six percent decrease, which means we can afford to do that and financially protect our current employees, but not the future employees going forward. The recommendation also comes with, hopefully, council is willing to come up with a committee, one or two council members as well as staff, to take a look at this shortly after the new year, so that we can figure out what are we gonna do next year. You know, some people have kind of thought, because we're not that big of a city yet, that we can't qualify for being self-insured, but it really has nothing to do with the size of the city. I think that's an option that we need to take a look at, is to sit there and figure out what kind of changes are we going to make. We may be able to go back to offering the same type of coverage for all employees, but this is the way that we're recommending going forward for this, this next year, so. With that, mayor, I have, stand for any questions if there are.
Ben?
I think you answered both of my questions, but I'm gonna ask him just to make sure.
Okay.
One, it sounds like this didn't go, because of however short of notice this was from the time that, that you got word that this wasn't gonna be, our current plan wasn't gonna be offered again. Probably not enough time to actually do a true shop around.
No, we do not. Our, our open enrollment is here within a week and a half.
Okay. And so, the plan would be in twenty-four, too?
Yes, sir.
Look at shopping that out to see?
Yes, sir.
Do that.
Probably right after the holidays, because, yes.
Okay, that was my first question. Second question, I think, then, is answered by that, as well as that, is the, is the request to do it for only twenty-four, or, or what, what happens beyond twenty-four, would be the thought?
The request is to establish it, a two-tiered system right now, for all current employees to, to sit there and still maintain that current commitment, that if you have your worst-case scenario, health-wise, your maximum out-of-pocket is this, but then for all future employees going forward. But again, if we get a committee together and right after the first of the year, we take a look at it, and we say, hey, it is now time to either, A, go to a different broker, different company, do something different, then we can take a look at this and figure out, would it apply only to current employees or future employees? Would we still need a two-tiered system? If we, if we decide that it may be best for us at this time to self-insure, then more than likely, whatever plan we would look at, we would want to make certain that it's all employees, so I can't answer that question as a very.
So, it's basically continuous until some sort of decision is made?
Until a change is made, yes, sir. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, definitely gotta do something, because maximum out-of-pocket at ten thousand would be life-changing, and you look at out-of-network, where that maximum goes to thirty-six thousand, you're talking about bankruptcy, so that's.
And, and, and I didn't even really quite honestly address network, out-of-network and everything, you, you kind of assume most.
Most aren't, but it does happen.
Yes, it does. It does.
Let me dial in on a couple of numbers. So, I understand that policy's gone away, new policy is this, so, did you say, did you put a number on how much it would cost to self-fund, you would estimate how much it would cost out of the city budget to put that money in the health savings account?
With what we already put in, currently, right now, we fund about ninety-six thousand dollars a year into that HRA account.
Okay.
And again, it is on a as-needed-type basis, so we have several employees that say, hey, look, I need to reimburse, reimburse, and if they've had a bad year, when the pot gets low, we, we re, we put more into it. So, the recommendation, or the recommendation is based on the fact that, according to our broker, this plan, as proposed now, saves ninety thousand dollars a year in what the city pays in annual premium.
Right.
Take that ninety thousand dollars and put it in, in hold, so that way, if we need to add it to the health reimbursement account, we will do that, which should help offset any increase that we have.
Question, is that ninety thousand enough?
Yes, sir, it is.
To cover the offset?
Yes, sir. Looking at the last four years worth of data to where we average about thirty-seven percent of the people that utilize it, more so than others, yes, that is enough.
And then, what was our premium last year? What is this premium going to be this year, assuming what we just, what you just laid out? How much is, how much, does, you said, you're saying the premium actually drops? Sorry, I want to make sure I understand.
Roughly, I'll just, because I don't have the, the exact figures in front of me, roughly, the, the city's contribution, the city's insurance premium for the program is about one point four million dollars a year.
Okay.
This, with this plan, it's about one point three. It's ninety-one, ninety thousand nine hundred and ten dollars less than what it was for two thousand twenty-three.
Perfect. I just want to make sure I understood that, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm thinking.
Charles?
Yes. I was thinking about the employees going forward. A lot of times, probably fifty percent of the time, employees going forward would possibly be replacing where somebody retired?
Yes, sir.
Or took another job, but we have to always consider we're gonna have more employees a year from now, hopefully, than we do.
Yes, sir.
And anyway, is, is it unreasonable to even consider bringing this forward with, with the employees that are going forward, that you hire forward? Can we afford to do it for, keep it a one-tiered system? Is it a better, is it better for recruiting new employees, too, to have your one, one-tiered system?
There will be a difference of opinion when it comes to that question. People are of the opinion that our, one of our very best benefits that we offer is our health insurance, and it is. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. The fact that we pay a hundred percent of the insurance premium, my own personal opinion, and, and again, so this, it's, it's hard to say that, because it is a matter of opinion. My own personal opinion, we already pay a hundred percent of both the individual as well as the family plan. I don't know of any other city that does that, much less the HRA account on top of it. So, again, for future employees going forward, that's the reason why I'm making the recommendation, is I don't, I don't think it's sustainable. We have fifty-eight employees now. If we have a hundred and fifty-eight employees, and there's that potential for financial commitment to where an extra forty-five, four thousand dollars or nine thousand dollars, depending on whether it's an individual or family, I personally do not believe that that's sustainable, and that's the reason why I would recommend a two-tiered system. Could we do it for the next year until we have a committee get together and figure out? Could we do it for the next year until we have a committee get together and figure out what our long-term health plan is going to be? Yes, I think we probably could. To me, I, the recommendation, the reason why I'm making this is just because of, I think at some point in time, it's not a matter of setting a precedent. It's, it's, it is a concern of mine to where everyone comes in and says, well, wait a minute, the city's, you know, if I have a bad year, the city's, everybody, the city's going to give me $9,000 up to that. That's, that's, that's hard to swallow, so. But to answer your question, yes, I do believe the city could do it. It is a financial calculation because we have all 58 employees. Not all 58 employees are going to have good, bad year, so, so to speak. I mean, it's, it's a percentage, it's a risk.
The bad, the bad years come when you try to self-insure and then you get hit all the.
Well, and that's, and that's the reason why we need, I believe, we need to have a committee to help do that because there are a few people that have some experience doing that, and then there are us that haven't done that before. And so we don't know what all the pitfalls is. We have been told by our broker that the first couple of years of self-insuring standby, it's difficult because you need to build up a balance. So again.
Well, your, your opinion is that basically the fact that we have 100% payment of their insurance premium is, is very rare that that, that's going to be a, a real plus on your ability to.
Again, that's my opinion. I have other staff members that have already sat there and said, but Park City has the very best, and that's important. At some point in time, it was a recommendation, and that's where I came down on it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Randy?
So I understand it's not sustainable. And after our conversation today, I understand the recommendation, and I'll be supportive of that. I just still have a hard time moving that to be kind of a continuous thing. So I, I really, I really agree with putting a committee together to look at our, look at other options.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is not sustainable going forward. This is an HRA account. Do we offer an FSA option as well?
Yes.
We have both.
Yes.
And do we know how many people take advantage of both of those?
No, I do not. I do know under the HRA account that again, in addition to the city's contribution, an employee has a capability of committing funds to it, correct? Pre-tax under the HRA, committing pre-tax dollars. That's what? That's HRA. Yes, ma'am?
So yes, we do offer an FSA. However, the, the restrictions on that, that the council put into place is that there's a year waiting period for employees to participate.
There's a year waiting for the?
For the FSA.
Oh.
Flexible spending account.
Right. So we give them a year restriction for FSA, but they can do HRA the first year?
The HRA is city funds. They, it's not individuals' money, it is the city's money. So the city puts that in there, so therefore if it's not used, it stays in the city account.
So I guess does that raise concerns for double dipping then?
No, because an FSA can be used for other purposes. So.
Well, I mean, can they, I mean, what if they come to the city and say, I need reimbursed for this, but they've got their flexible spending and they've paid it for it on their flexible spending card?
So surenci manages both of these accounts, and there are IRS restrictions, and they follow those. Believe me, we have difficulties in getting our money back sometimes because of that. They, they know exactly what is in either account, and they will move it back and forth according to the purposes. So the HRA, it's funds that can only be used in, in connection with that Aetna plan. And it is watched over by surenci. So the FSA.
Surenci manages both of them for us.
Manages both of them. So the flexible spending account is one that would be the employees' dollars that can be used for other medical things that don't go through the Aetna account or for glasses.
Okay. Well, that, that makes, I mean, if they're, if they're both, they're managing both, I mean, that makes sense then that they can, I mean, if it was two separate, that's where I would have some concerns. What's the difference between, so you have on here Wesley Network, Open Network. What's an Open Network? I guess I don't know what that is.
An Open Network is where an individual could go to either hospital system, which would be Vicrissy and Wesley. The preferred is Wesley only.
But it doesn't matter because it looks like it's all the same coverage, really?
Coverage is, the coverage has always been the same. It's just that it is, it's, it's more cost-effective for the city if someone goes to the prefer.
Okay. Well, like I said, I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to support it just based on conversations we had today and, and what we discussed and, and. But I, I do agree that we need to have something together because this is not sustainable.
Thank you, Brandy. Ben?
So question would probably, I guess maybe for us then is, was there, is there a reason why the flexible spending accounts are, are basically held on to participate until they've completed a year? Versus just letting that, sorry, Dana. I have a second question after that, but not related to FSAs.
So when the flexible spending account was first initiated by the city, it was new. And the concern was that we had a lot of, of employees who had been here for a long period of time, but what if someone just started with the city? So when you sign up for a flexible spending account, it starts over again. And employees pay that by pay period, but they take out, say, I want $2,000 in mine. And so then it's taken out of, of each of those paychecks. But as soon as that plan year starts, the individual can spend that. They may not have the money that's in there, but the individual can spend it. So the concern was that someone will spend all of that money, and they know they're leaving, so they go buy 10 pairs of glasses, and then they leave the city. And then the city, it was the city's money then.
That makes sense. I just, that makes sense. The second question I had, and like this isn't really, really a deficit or anything like that, though is, I mean, the, the plan itself, looking at this, when we talk about our insurance, what we pay, the, with the rising costs there, we, I mean, I, I, I get the point of recruitment with our plan, their insurance plan, but I also understand from a budgetary standpoint where as the city continues to grow and as we continue to hopefully bring on more employees that are, are doing some of these, the, the way in which we operate our insurance program is, is hard to continue on sustainability-wise. I think it's smart to keep what we have for existing employees, just because that's the promise and commitment. That's why, that's really why. But I think this gives us an opportunity to, to maybe hit reset a little bit on new employees moving forward. I'd be interested to know, granted, this isn't my job, so, you know. But is the HR a component of where are people coming into the workforce or people that are coming into our, at our level of workforce? Where are their interest at there too? I mean, do they, if you're offsetting your insurance costs by wage compensation pieces, you know, where, is, is that a bigger pool for people in the market that we're in right now? Or are people, I mean, it's.
No, I'll answer that one. Again, I want to be sensitive because everybody's got their own movie. She said that to me about a million times, everyone. If you're a single guy or gal and you come to work here, health insurance may not be the most important thing to you at this time. If you're in your twenties or thirties, that's just facts, you know? But if you come to the city and you're, and you're, you're a little bit older and you've got a family and everything, then it's tend. We have had people that have come specifically saying, I'm here for the health insurance. I'm not really so much concerned about what you're paying me on a day that they are, nevertheless, but they're here for the health insurance. So again, I, it's kind of hard. We don't have the metrics to be able to sit there and say, well, this is important to 57% of our employees or 87%. It is important. That's one of the things, for the time that I've been here, I realize it is very important because Park City has established itself, that has always been a concern of mine. Is it sustainable going forward? Because I think that's what the council needs to look at is five, 10 years down the road when we are double the size and staff. Is it sustainable? I do not believe with everything that we've got right in front of us, current plans and, and the trajectory that we're heading on, that it's sustainable. I think that's why the reason why, right after the first year, we really need to take a serious look at this and come up with a whole comprehensive look.
And if there's nothing else, I'd make a motion to be approved, whatever.
So I, I guess Sean's, when, when Sean said that there was a difference of opinion, that has been the conversation that we've had ongoing. And I would just say, the report that was just given by the city administrator this evening on all of these new hires, I can't tell you how important that that was. People that that is exact, I'm sorry, exactly why they came here. I do understand the, the situation that we're in. I did recommend that when, as soon as I received this, that we needed to get a committee together because everything is unsustainable. I agree with that. But I will tell you that why I was able to hire this last, this last string of people, almost every one of them here because of the health insurance. And people are excited about Park City right now, very much so.
And, and again, that being said, they're here for the health insurance, but to what level of the health insurance? That's, that's the hard part to discern. We look at it a little bit different. To me, the fact that Park City provides 100% of the premium for both the individual and the family, and that's not anywhere else, that to me seems appropriate. Again, it's, it's hard to discern and identify.
Randy?
Was that a motion, Ben?
Yeah.
I didn't.
I know, I just made a motion to approve whatever for, it just says recommended motion approval, so I'll do that. Sign me up.
I'm not clear on what our motion is here.
Says receiving file on here, doesn't say make a motion to do insurance.
Mine says staff recommends approval.
Yes, it says at the end, staff recommends approval.
I would make maybe a motion then to approve the recommended actions from our city in our report that.
That would help, sir. Thank you.
That we would potentially match on the HRA contribution levels up to what they were for current employees.
Yes, sir.
Through 123123.
Randy?
Okay, I think I understand what you motioned, so I'll second that. But I do have a comment. I would, before this committee gets put together, I would like to see maybe what some of the other smaller cities, what their health insurance, how, what are they doing? I mean, I know you say that we're probably the only city that pays everything 100%. I'd like to see, you know, some of those other options. That way, when the committee gets together, they have some, some idea of what, what's kind of the basis around the area, what's comparisons.
Okay. Charlie?
Can I make a substitute motion? Do we have to wait for this motion to pass or fail?
Tell me what you want to do, and we'll tell you.
I want, I want to leave it, I want to leave it to support our current employees and future employees through 2024, to give our committee a time to, chance to look at it and revisit this again in 12 months.
So I think on that one, because that's totally changing the motion. I think we need to vote this up or down.
Okay.
Then if it fails, then you can make that motion.
Okay.
Thanks. I would say this, if we're going to do the committee thing, I, I'd like to see it on one of the next couple of agendas so we can, I don't want that to fall by the wayside and we forget about it, so if this does pass. Okay, see, seeing no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Raise your hand if you're opposed. Oh, nice. I vote aye. So motion passes 4-3. All right, that was easy. That's why we're on, do you have any body reports?
Jim?
Do you have anything to report tonight?
Randy?
Just CCUA meets this Thursday at 4:30 in the conference, or the, yeah, the conference room, training room, whatever.
Oh. Charles?
After listening to the Champ Town presentation tonight, it kind of brought something that I've been thinking about in my mind that I'd like to pursue at least at, in a later time. And that's a study of our city signage. You know, the, what's on the highway, what we have going into our different entrances, et cetera. I think there, I think we should be looking forward to the point in time we want to really promote Park City. And I think a lot of signage would be very helpful, you know, not maybe this year, but in the next year to come.
Thank you. Ben, do you have anything?
No.
Thank you. Charles?
Early voting's open. I just want to encourage everybody to get out during this election season and cast your vote. That's it.
Very good. The home permits were pulled for the last month was zero. So we're still at 97, which is still a good number for the year. The other thing I want to comment on, this past week, we had a couple events at the arena. And I noticed a very packed parking lot up on Arena Drive. One night was Nate, I'm going to say his last name wrong, Barkazi, which, which was, it was an absolutely packed crowd. They estimated 6,000, and the, this weekend, they also had Mercy Me was 5,000. So just think of the impact on 11,000 people coming into our town of about 8,000. It's quite impressive and helpful for our local businesses. So that's all I have. With that said, I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Ben?
Summit.
Charlie?
Second.
Told by Ben, seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0.